Welcome to the January 23, 2024 Board of Trustees. May I ask for a call?
Mr. Kayling.
Provo.
Dr. Spencer Robinson. Mr. Cuadro.
Present.
Mayor Ciara is doing this. Dr. O'Neal.
Here.
Last, we're supposed to stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first order of business is the nomination and election of chair. May I ask for a nomination for chair?
I nominate Mr. Kayling.
Second? Do you have a second to the motion?
Oh, yes. I second. So sorry.
It's okay. Are there any other nominations for chair? Hearing that, all in favor of Mr. Kayling for the chairperson of the trustees? All in favor of Mr. Kayling as chair?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, but this time I'll turn it over to the chair.
No, hold on, Mr. Chairman. I'm gonna have to excuse myself for nine, around six o'clock.
Okay. So, we need to do an average of vice chair. Do we have a nomination for vice chair?
I nominate Julie Spencer Robinson.
Do you have a second?
I second.
What if I won? All right, okay.
So, we have Mr. Cuadro put in as vice chair. I mean, all in favor of Mr. Cuadro for vice chair?
Aye.
Hearing that, all in favor, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
So, at this time, we will read the excerpts of the Oliver Smith rule of 1844. Excerpts taken from the Oliver Smith rule of 1844, taken from that section pertaining to the founding of Smithville School. I direct the trustees to pay over to the town in North Hampton such an amount that may be necessary in the first place on purchasing a farm or tract of land for a patterned farm to be improved and practical details has to become a model as far as can be affected by time and expense to farmers generally. And to the second place, another farm be designated as an experimental farm, experimental farm to aid and assist the labors and improvements of the patterned farm in the art, in science of husbandry and agriculture. I direct that suitable building shall be erected on said farms for the use and accommodation thereof of other buildings convenient for the residence of mechanics and workshops and tools shall be provided suitable for the manufacture of implements of husbandry, of the moot improvement models of the invention of the artist employed for the business of the farms and schools thereafter mentioned and also for sale in the benefit of the institution. It should be thought best to extend the manufacturing establishment to other trades and for other purposes in the manufacturing line. There should also be established on the premises of the school of industry and pupils shall be of fair character and shall be instructed in the art, in science of agriculture and some mechanic art in the shops attached to the premises. And I further direct that a suitable number of competent instructors and artists shall always be provided and employed into various branches and departments of the establishment. The establishment shall be called Smith Agricultural School and it shall be chosen by ballot by the inhabitants of said town, three distinct three home living in North Hampton or elsewhere, one of whom shall be a husbandman, one mechanic, who shall have the control and superintendence of the whole establishment. It shall annually report in writing to said town the state of the funds and expenditures, the improvements made on the premises, and the state of the school and institution in general. At this time, I'm gonna ask for the mission statement.
Awesome. Mission statement, Smith Vocational Agricultural High School is to prepare students for social responsibility, employment, and post-secondary education through rigorous applied technical and academic programs.
Is there any participation by the trustees?
Not at this time, but I invited Mr. Parrott to speak on behalf of the building committee.
There we go.
Yep.
So, tonight, we have a couple speakers, and I'd like to ask Mr. Parrott, your building committee, please. You first.
Sure. Okay. Thank you very much. My name is John Parrott. I was a teacher here in antiquity, and my wife is a teacher at North Hampton's JFK. My expertise is I have a PhD in forestry and land management and expertise in renewable energy choice. And so, one of the challenges of this new building is a challenge I think that many of us are also facing in our own lives. We're being recommended to choose more responsibly how we move ourselves, whether it be through EVs or whether we should take the trip after all, or how we heat our homes. Should we use air source heat pumps or some other renewable heating approach? The reality is those more responsible choices tend to be more expensive choices, and we need to have the aid of public funds to facilitate that. And so, the green economies are equivalent to our traditional conventional economies. This challenge is coming into full view with the new school building. There is two options on the table. One is a steel building, and the reality is steel is a very energy-intensive material that takes a great deal of mining and energy to forge. And the other is a wood-stick building. Wood is carbon, so one has a carbon depth and one has a carbon benefit. But the reality is the wood building costs more. And so, that's a dilemma. The fundamental goal is to provide the appropriate learning space for the young people who are challenged by the loss of building due to fire. And so, what is our choice? It is not dissimilar to the residential choices that lots of us are facing. So, I ask the committee to have some sort of patience and recognition that green energy, green choice is more complicated, often more expensive, but is virtuous because that is what we should be teaching our young people, just for sort of the cultural sustainability, if not just the next path, because that is apparently the right direction for us to go for climatic reasons. So, this is gonna cost more, but I just got an email that I believe the state is gonna step up, and I'm guardedly optimistic in a big way. So, it's either not gonna step up, and you have a steel building, and we're gonna make the best of it because the teaching in alignment with the will and the mission statement is the goal of this school. But there's other ways to approach it, and if the state can find that miracle money, then I hope that we can embrace that and celebrate the virtue an even better building might represent so that it can help the young people better understand choice and the challenges of that choice. So, the reality is it will cost more. I'm hoping that we can land a state grant to bridge the difference, which is about a million dollars to be truthful, trying to get as close to apples-to-apples between the two buildings. The reality is it's not an insignificant amount of money.
Can you elaborate that on that, John, a little bit more of the potential grant money?
I'm not sure I can because I'm not at liberty. I'm not the decider. I do not work for the state, but I did, and so I have connection to many of the decision-makers. And we had a member of the state, DCR, here earlier, who is the wood utilization forester for the Commonwealth. And so, he also spoke with the official, and they will be calling you tomorrow to have a conversation, which I think is very promising. But promises are great. What you need is a check. You need certainty and confidence. And the reality is that is welcome, but you have to make a choice. And the choice is to provide the students with the learning environment that they need. And so, I'm asking that the board entertain the idea of delaying final choice on building material decision until your February meeting. I can't make any promises, but I'm optimistic. There's about 50 million in funds that are going to be announced by the governor for climate smart forestry, and there's a real possibility that they will give out 49 million to municipalities for climate smart forestry and give one to you. There's a real possibility of that. That's the simple suggestion I offer. But I can't make that promise, and I certainly can't deliver on anything, but perhaps in conversation between you and EEA, that's a possibility. I think that'd be lovely, but the bottom line is you need a building, and it needs to happen soon.
Thank you.
Another gentleman, do you wish to make?
I gotta stand up because I don't wanna be... I thought if I stand over here, everybody can see me not that handsome or anything. My name is Twig Burlingame. I live in Florence. I actually graduated from the apprenticeship program as an adult in electrical department, electrician. I'm actually part of Smithville, even though I never thought I was. I graduated from a high school. Let me back run quick on me. I was in the airports for four years. I went to Vietnam. Whether you like him or don't, President Nixon passed the Vietnam Adjustment Act, which meant that Vietnam veterans could have apprenticeship in any of the trades they wanted or if there wasn't a trade. Now, I was lucky enough to be working on the ground crew at the VA at the time. This opening came up, and Pete Doherty, who was a prominent electrician in the area, his son also worked up there, and he knew that I was interested in being an electrician. My grandfather was, and I learned something in the Air Force. But anyway, I got hired up there under this act, which was kinda like, well, the court rated the Veterans Act, we get out, and Nixon won it. So, I was paid during four years of apprenticeship, working at the VA and then going to school, which is... And it was a union class, so normally I wouldn't be able to get in on it, but Pete Doherty was the one that got me in. So, I went four years here at night to get my license, and then I got my journeying certificate, and I worked up to VA for almost 30 years, and then I self-came. So, I'm a tradesperson, so I'm interested in school from a distance. But the last three years or so, I have a granddaughter, Maggie Water, who's in animal science. She plays sports. And when she got stepped on by Bean, her cow, who was like 800 pounds, stepped on her foot, I think at that point she decided she didn't wanna be a large animal, so to speak. And I've heard of this small animal program, companion animal, the police need a place for animals, and it could be a good place for students to learn about small animals. And I didn't really know where it was going. I got online, read a couple of your minutes, and I know you can't respond to me, but at some point, maybe new business or something, you can say something. But I understand plumbing and electrical is going on there. This is the old... You don't have to answer me. I assume it's the old rec department building, and I could be wrong. And I'm not sure. It said the completion would be the spring of this year. My question would be if, and the answer somehow, when that program would start. My granddaughter and I know a bunch of other kids would like to get into that type of program, small animals, and there is a very limited amount of veterinarians around this area. You wouldn't think so. Most every one of you, guaranteed, had a dog or cat at some point or a neighbor or whatever have been animals all my life, small. That's my interest to be in here, and I don't usually like to go to meetings, speak in public, but I just thought I would. Thank you.
Appreciate it. At this time, I'd like to ask for approval for the board meeting's regular Board of Trustees meeting from December 19.
Some more? Aye.
This time, we have the school's primary.
Yeah, let's introduce two representatives from our English department, Mr. Risher and Mr. Cody, to give some highlights on what we're doing in English.
Cats down here and then walk around a lot. My name's Louis Cody. I'm one of the English teachers here, and that's Rosemary over there. We'd like to thank you for letting us take this opportunity. Presentation is up over there, so I know some of you are kinda backwards. I'll talk about, quickly, talk about the ninth and 10th grade stuff and what we've been doing. Rosemary will take over with the upper class. One of the things we've been trying to do is come work for the different grades with essential questions. You know, this, you know, last year and this year has been a big push for this that connects what they're doing in the classroom to what they would, might experience in the outside world. For example, the freshmen, they did digital book projects on books that they, they worked in in book clubs with the essential question, how do you set yourself up for success? Because students coming into high school need to know how to do that, especially because it's a different change from middle school. So, what they were able to do is they picked these books that had young protagonists around their age going through these different experiences and, you know, trying to figure out what to do to succeed at whatever the issue was. The students did projects, digital projects, that one was either developing a music playlist that chose songs that felt ideally connected to success. We Are the Champions, for example, by Queen. Or they created Google searches and would explain what that character would search on using Google to help them succeed. Or they did a podcast. They created a podcast with classmates talking about as the protagonist or the, as the students themselves, what went on throughout the book to help that character succeed, or if they didn't succeed, what they could have done differently to succeed at whatever the conflict was. So, that was just three different examples of what they did for digital projects. And again, the essential questions kind of adapt each trimester and ideally all connect by the end of the year, and this is something that all different classes went through. The next slide does have other examples of these things. Again, the big three were the Google searches, music playlist, and the podcast. With the 10th grade, which is the next slide coming up, the focus on was justice. And I realize I didn't put the essential question up there, but it was what makes a criminal was the first one. And again, they chose books that, you know, such as Trevor Noah's Florida Crime and the other Westmore, which is another one that dealt with what makes a person a criminal. That was a very popular one, and same to Trevor Noah one. And so, they also did the book, the book club and book projects, but they also looked into the, like, letters. They took an opportunity to look up laws that they didn't agree with, and they wrote these letters, you know, not with the intention of mailing them, but like, some did, some mailed them, looking at laws that they had issues with, that they didn't disagree, that they disagreed with and felt needed to be changed. And there were some hilarious ones. The snake breeder one was a good one about like not being able to breed articulated pythons. Another one was, which was, I didn't know about, the hunting was a really popular one. A number of students, hunting's very popular, that they had a lot of issues with this, and having read the law myself, it did come off as very unfair. So, that was a popular assignment that really engaged the students, and that was a big goal, was engaging students into these assignments that matter, that matter in the real world too. And then, one of the other things that we've been doing is trying to set them up for better MCAT success. The no writing and the Quill or grammar in spelling program that we found online, no writing is really successful with the freshmen because it's an engaging way where it uses their own interests to come up with grammar assignments and spelling assignments by they go through this whole process for about 10 minutes when they sign up, choosing the things they're interested in, whether it's cartoons, automobiles, sports. So, all the questions are geared toward those things that they know, and so they're connected with and they're more focused while they're working on it. And then, Quill has been used with a lot of sophomore classes, and those are, you know, more NCAT structured type questions. So, they've been engaged with the no writing. By the time they're in their sophomore class year, they're seeing these same questions, but set up more how they might see a question on MCAT. In the middle is Common Lit, and this is what a lot of the grades are now, all the grades are using. And this is a program that's using the MCAT framework, and it has these full 360 programs where everything's put together using essential questions. If we'd be able to zoom in, you'd see it has all these central questions with the framework standards set up, and a lot of the questions, again, are set up how they might see it on MCAT, and it tracks all the data for every assignment as they progress. And on top of that, it gives you other supplemental lessons and videos and movie clips that connect with whatever you might be reading and learning at the time. So, they have these other things. If they're having a little trouble understanding, oh, here's it. It's already set up to have a YouTube little tutorial for them or little movie clip to help better explain it. I can go much deeper into this, but I don't wanna do that right now. It's been super successful across the boards, I think Rosemary agreed, with the different classes. And that's for the ninth and 10th. What do you think?
Explain what's going on for the 11th graders and the 12th graders. Currently, we are working on paying resume writing and cover letter unit for our juniors. So, the emphasis being to prepare the students for mock interviews, which takes place in shop. And I think the next go around, I had it postponed because of weather, but I think it's February 13, yeah, with reschedule for 14. But anyway, so what we've been doing with the juniors, it's a school-wide effort. First, the shops introduce resumes and templates to their students according to what's in the field, and we build slightly different, they might have a slightly different way of doing their resume. In English, we take them through skill sets that are not their competencies. So, basically, we explain what soft skills are and how those are important, just like the hard skills that are in the shop. From there, some shops do the cover letters with students. Most, it's not a requirement, which is where the English department comes in. We ask students to look at sample cover letters. We ask them to pretend to write a cover letter for a mock job that they might go on. We use indeed.com to find that information. We ask the students to think about their cover letter as a piece of persuasion, persuading somebody to hire them, because that's what the whole junior year is about, persuasion. So, also, we have Miss Scants, who's normally sitting back there as our librarian, media specialist. She walks the students through thank notes after the case of junior. So, it's really a school-wide effort, spearheaded at the top by guidance, and then academics, and then the shop teachers, and then the librarian, takes us through the whole process. The next step that we do after that, this is gearing students up to write an editorial or an opinion piece. So, after the cover letters and the resumes, the students apply their knowledge of rhetoric to an editorial writing assignment. So, students are encouraged to actually submit their editorials. We've had kids submit to the New York Times, which is where we actually got the idea from. We've had kids submit to Reuters, AP. We've had kids submit to Teenage, which is actually a smaller publication and is student-driven. So, there's multiple opportunities for kids to submit their writing, which is what we want. We want them to write for, you know, real-world audience. Okay, moving on to the seniors. This is something that we've been doing for several years now since I was in here. 12th grade storytelling, the memoir writing, and we're very proud to have veterans come to visit us, as we need the things they carry, like Tim O'Brien, and, let's see, that's, that's Doug Anderson. He's a local poet, and he's gonna be coming in soon to talk with the seniors and sophomores. Veterans Education Body to contact them. And so, that's some pictures of book club projects that Louis and Sir Cody has talked about.
The boom balls and most eggs.
Basically, a boom ball is simply the kids get pieces of paper, and then they have to write down the themes of the book, the characters, the deep connections.
This, the essential, what it takes to be...
What is, yeah, what is happening?
What is happening? How would you see this?
So, every, every grade has an essential question. And that's gamifying curriculum where the kids, when they do book clubs, it's not just talking about the book, okay? It's actually playing games, and it's actually building and creating and having discussion about what they read. So, agenda game, we just did this, and that's a popular one. So, the agenda game might be tell us a time by a character in the book who defied expectations. Okay? If you can do that, then you pick your agenda block, and just hope you don't fall in the glass. Okay? So, we gamify a bit to get them talking. Something to add that, this is fairly close, the AP program. We've done it since 2019 for the seniors, and there's a track record, they're one, two, three, five years. You can see that the numbers of kids who get college credit are increasing. So, we started in 2019 with the Lit program, and it's growing. And eventually, in 2020, well, there was no class option there, but in 2021, that was the first year that we offered it. And so, the AP language exam for the 11th graders is based on rhetoric, not literature. So, it's all language-based. And our kids scored 2021. We had one student pass three in 2022 and four in 2023. So, that's saying that all those students got college credit. They have passed a college class. And most of our students, even if they're not passing the exam, they're getting, say, a two, which means you're college ready. And most of our students are two or above. We have several ones, but most are two or above. And we thought it was a good idea to kind of stop and look at what our students are saying rather than what Mr. Cody and I could say about the questions.
So, we do surveys with all of our students at the end of each unit, get feedback, and they, most of the feedbacks do not even contain your name on it, so they can be more honest. And we are seeing really good feedback this year because we put so much effort into more engaging lessons last year and this year, and we're seeing the progress in more student engagement, which is something that a lot of schools haven't been seeing over the past few years.
Right.
So, you know, again, like the, the surveys are actually speaking for themselves. So, we're getting more feedback and honest feedback from students that they would like to look at.
I think we're also making more of a conscientious effort to solicit that feedback. On Fridays, we do this. It's a work in progress. Nothing we do is stagnant. We're always constantly evaluating, looking at data, looking at what students are saying, keeping our fingers on the pulse. We don't want these to stagnate, so we're really trying to build up the program. In the 14 years I've been here... In the 14 years I've been here, I can say that there's only been improvements. There may have dips here and there, but generally improvements. So I think that's about all we have to.
Thank you for letting us.
Yeah, thank you.
Share our stuff.
I just, Mr. Cody.
Yeah.
I just want to acknowledge and thank Mr. Cody. Mr. Cody has some circumstances, life that's taking him away from us and he'll be leaving at the end of the week. I just want to publicly thank you on behalf of the students. You've been a tremendous member of this community and a member of the English department and we wish you the best of luck and thank you for everything that you've done on behalf of the students here.
Thank you. And so I'll share, like, I worked at Worcester Technical High School before this for 13 years, a school of almost 1,700 students. The year and a half I've been here has felt like home. I had a great department that I felt very engaged with and that was something that was missing at the Latmy, because it's such a big school, you get lost. This was, constantly felt like it was a family that worked here. And that's, that's from administration, guidance, the departments, like everyone my first year here, I mean, effort to come and say, hi, talk to me, like, it's something I'm going to miss and it's, I really did that, so I want you to know that. And I appreciated everything the department's done for me and constant check-ins from you there, that was great. And getting to know Josh this past year, like, so I appreciated everyone that I had and I will, so I appreciate it. So thank you, I appreciate it.
So jumping into, you know, again, the first standard instructional leadership, just a couple brief updates from the past month. Back in December, before the December break, we hosted the MGR, which is the Massachusetts Department of African Cultural Resources. The new Commissioner Randall, she came on campus and it was a great opportunity to not only show her the main campus, but we got into our new van and drove up to the state lands and just showed her the expansive resources that we have. And obviously, the amount of resources that we have, and she was in various issues that we have to deal with and manage. It was a great opportunity. The photo that you see at the top, she had a, she ended a tour with a brief meeting with the HPA chapter. She spoke a couple of things about Commissioner Randall. There are some ties to step. She's local from Wester, Mass. I believe it was her grandfather, her father went here and her mother was on the side. So a lot of connections, so it was great to have her here. The second one, this is one of my annual fun days, participating with the criminal justice program with the MRE challenge. So as a veteran, I've had my fair share of MREs and I've never had an MRE taste as good as what the criminal justice students prepare. So sort of their challenge is they're broken into various teams. They have to choose, I believe, three different MREs and then come up with a, like, I think it's a five-course meal based on those ingredients for the three MREs. And it's, they do a great job. So there's a lot of team building, a lot of creative thinking, presentation skills. And we sort of then debrief about those skills and they weren't really thinking about as they're preparing an MRE, how do those convey to life out of criminal justice when you're going to be a law enforcement officer or attorney or whatnot. So it's fun and then unfold for the next day and a half. Moving into management and operations, speaking about the container animal building and just a couple of quick updates. So the exterior doors have been properly installed. They're not fully enclosed, so all the windows still have to be installed. At least we have some doors now in the building. And the plumbing inspection occurred a couple of weeks ago, I believe, as well. So we passed with flying colors. There's still some small items that have to be completed from the plumbing side. The major inspection has been done, it has been passed, so that's great. And we are still waiting on the HVAC system. It is somewhere between manufacturer and smoke. So at some point, once that arrives, we can then get the heat up and running, fully close it in and finish off the building. Again, the goal is to have it done by the end of the school year and then have the program up and running next year. So a couple of photos you see, another one on the left is just a, generally you see a lot of the duct, ductwork that has been installed. You can't really see in fine detail, but a lot of the wires have been pulled, outlets have been installed. And then the window on the right again is one of the exterior, the picture on the right is one of the exterior doors that was installed. So again, I can't thank Tim Smith for his leadership, the custodial staff over the summer doing most of the framing and then the plumbing students and structural students doing all of the work inside up to this point. So progress in being made. Continuing on with management and operations, I shared this back in the fall, I just wanted to give the board a brief update. These are the positions or chairs that we want to fill within our program advisory teams. And the sort of the notion that we had as administrative team is, as department heads within a particular shop, as you talk to your advisory members, we're sort of sheltered, okay? We don't really know what's happening across the other 14 programs. And some programs struggle to fill all of the needs within their membership. So our thought this year was to begin to share this information out across all the advisory members, share it with you as a board, because I may have a neighbor or I may have a partner or I may have a friend or whatever, that might be able to fill one of these seats. So I just want to take a moment and quickly run down some of the openings. So again, as board members, if you have somebody that you want to be dropped to and tap on the shoulder and say, hey, we'd love to have you get involved with some educational, get back to the school, give some recommendations. So within advanced manufacturing, they're looking for a racial or linguistic minority individual. In agmech, they're looking for post-secondary along with somebody that would represent apprenticeship programs. In animal science, they need organized labor in post-secondary. In automotive, they need a person with disabilities in post-secondary. Cabin making, person with disabilities, racial linguistic minorities, parent guardian and student. Carpentry, person with disabilities, post-secondary, parent guardian and student. Cosmetology, non-traditional student or non-traditional individual. Electrical, person with disabilities and racial linguistic. Graphics, person with disabilities, racial linguistic minority, non-traditional, parent guardian. And in health tech, racial and linguistic minority. And one thing that we talked to the department heads about, it's not that these particular shops, they have multiple openings, that you have to look for multiple openings. One individual might be able to sort of check off multiple categories, so something to keep in mind. So I just want to take the board and again, if you can identify any help there, we'd greatly appreciate it.
Question?
Yes.
Animal science, organized labor. There's unions for animal science?
That could be.
Well, when I think of organized labor, I think of unions. I was involved with construction trades.
Correct.
Could you further explain?
I can only assume that there is organized labor since that's still a need. Some shops, they don't have any organized labor, they put NA. So the fact that it wasn't NA.
All right, so somebody on your advisory already or the teachers brought this forward?
Correct.
Okay.
Great question. Any other questions or comments about this list?
Thank you.
Thank you. Now moving on to our favorite topic, the Horticulture Building, just want to give some updates. And so some background, since we last met, we had several site testing individuals on campus, just testing the soil and specifically around the existing slab. So where the fire occurred, there were concerns about contaminants, be it oil, gas, some of the different drone products. So we bored several holes through the slab, disentesting, it all came back fine. So that was a dangerous step in the right direction. And I think if we were going to gamble, I think we would have, you know, bet on having some contaminants in that particular area of campus. So that's very positive. On the flip side, I do want to thank our instructional staff, they had great, great work down there. They've already agreed to remove, remove or move the trees that are going to be in the construction zone. And that's going to save the school a lot of money rather than going out to bid. We'll talk about the estimate on the morning. So as they began to move some of the early, some smaller trees, we found a graveyard of some old equipment that was buried by the school many generations ago. So I am hoping that as we continue to excavate the construction site, that we will find some valuable, I think several period, we just perhaps put that towards the cost of the building. But thus far, we have not found anything really valuable. I just, I shared that with the board, that as we continue to dig, we have no way to reevaluate it, okay? But so far, the testing came back, I don't want to say positive, I don't want to say negative, it came back with no findings, we didn't see anything. Design document phase, so again, as board, you voted back in November to move forward to design document phase of the construction project. The second estimate came back late last week. I met with SMA last Friday and we met today with the building committee and I'll get into some of the documents, some of the details now. How I see it from my standpoint, there's a couple of options. On your agenda this evening, there is a motion to review DD and make a vote if we move forward or not. I just want to sort of talk, big picture, and I'll drill down in the next few slides to give you some of some data. One option is to vote. We really have two options. One is the traditional stick build option, which is the traditional wood building. The other option is to revert back to discussions that we had back in November, December around a metal pre-bath building. Those are really the two paths as a board we have in front of to vote on how we proceed. Okay, do we want the wooden building? Do we want a metal pre-bath building? And perhaps it's not a matter of why, it's not a, you as a decision maker, what path you want to have. So one option is this evening, with that motion, you can vote which one you want, okay? And I'll, I'll share the dollar figures that are attached to either path. Option two is to delay that vote until February 13th. So it's about three weeks. And we discussed this last week with SMA, delaying the project by three weeks, does it throw the entire project off? No. Does it continue to compress an already tight schedule? Yes. But SMA is fully aware of that and when I show the schedule, they've already moved me up to schedule, assuming that may be the outcome this evening. But again, if, you know, if they heard that the board voted on, moved the board on whatever path, I'm sure they would be delighted. So I just want to give that background. Part of the option two discussion that we had last Friday with SMA is that I'm going to share the estimate numbers, I'm going to share some numbers around a potential pre-bath metal building. We discussed this as a board, that perhaps the board wants to authorize us to hire a local general contractor to review the estimate numbers, to see if they're sort of in the ballpark for this region. And that would be just another data point as a board, you have the February 13th meeting, you have the estimate that came from SMA, I'll show you in a moment. You'll have an idea around the metal pre-bath building. You then have a data point from a local contractor to say, this is what we think the cost to build this building. And you'd have that, that information to then vote on at the February 13th. Again, there's pros and cons with either option. Once that vote occurs, whether the vote occurs this evening or it really has to be by February 13th, I'll elaborate on if we delay beyond February 13th, what happens. But once that vote occurs, whatever path you choose as a board, as board trustees, you move into the CD phase, which is the construction document phase. Just as a reminder, during that phase, there will be another estimate that comes out, just to give you as a board an idea of where do we stand with potential costs. So there is still that in the, in the scheduled budget. Once the CD phase is complete, it comes back in front of you as a board to vote. And if we move forward, that's when we begin the official bidding process and then we begin construction. Before we start looking at the potential costs, I guess, I think I'd be failing my job if I fail to highlight, again, where we stand with revenue. Since the December, as you know, we've had some very good media coverage, we've had some good articles, you know, the video has been out, there's been several conversations. Thus far, nothing substantial has come in as far as potential fundraising donations. Okay, really nothing substantial. So with that said, we are just north of $6 million that we have available funds at this point. And again, as a reminder, that's our skills cap of grants that have to be spent by next June. That is the economic bond bill that Senator Comerford got through. That is the Smith College donation, along with other smaller donations for individuals, along with the insurance payout. Things to keep in mind, we most likely have to upgrade the electrical infrastructure. That was not in the initial plan, okay? But what we have currently, more power going down back, most likely it's not enough to now power this new building in addition to the container. So there's going to be an additional cost there that we have to absorb some of. Whether we absorb that through the $6 million or we absorb that through tuition revolving or whatnot, the bottom line is, it has to be absorbed. So that's a cost that we have to figure out. In addition to that, the generator infrastructure that we have on campus, most likely it's not sufficient to also power, in the case of an emergency, the new Horticulture Building. So most likely, we're going to have to have some level of generator power for this new building, which again, is an expense on top of building a building. I understand that this is a difficult decision. I've been saying this now for multiple years now, unfortunately, that the time has come just about to make a decision. Our students need a building and we have money available right now, just not enough. But the money that we have is going to run out before we want it. So I do highly, highly, highly recommend as a board, you can either vote this evening or, based on what I shared, give us three weeks to see some of the numbers. Dr. Fair shared the news from the state that perhaps, you know, there's going to be some support from the state, no guarantee. I personally went on the record during the building committee and I said I personally prefer the metal building. That was from my vantage point, I can only speak for me as a superintendent. My vantage point unfortunately is looking at the overall budget, is looking at needing a building that is hopefully designed and built in a way to educate our students. I also am the superintendent of a campus that has a building that was built in the 1950s that has to be rebuilt. And how do we deal with that? I'm also the superintendent of a campus that, with this model, we have an existing Horticulture Building that wasn't burnt down, okay? The remaining part, we talked about this earlier today, that needs some work if we're going to maintain that for the foreseeable future. Again, long-term, we want to knock that down, we want to expand, we talked about that with this building project, we can expand to include a new greenhouse and head house. But we cut all of that out, we're going to maintain the existing structure. There's probably going to be some costs that have to go into the existing structure so we can maintain it for the subsequent years. Where is that money coming from? So I shared my opinion at the building committee. I do stand behind the metal building. I do think the potential help from the state obviously would help a lot. There may be a hybrid option, you know, if we do a metal building skeleton, a frame, and then we do some wood. There might be ways, but I just, I've said this over and over and over, that we need a building. And I just, budget-wise, unless the state comes through, budget-wise, I don't see how we're going to afford it, you can see in the next few slides, so I'll just put that out there.
Do you have an estimate for the upgraded electrical and the generator?
So the electrical, I want to say it was several hundred thousand dollars. The generator, you're looking at over a hundred thousand, 108 to 145, depending on the level of generator.
So would be an additional generator for the new building or?
So, it's in the package, okay. So what's on the screen, shipping in your packet? This is similar from the November board meeting. That first column, that pre-bath metal building from the November board meeting, those are the numbers I shared with you back then. Again, that was an early estimate of what the actual construction costs of the new metal building, a lot of the site work and so on and so forth. And you saw the total of $6.7 million at the bottom. That includes stock costs, which is costs above and beyond construction costs. That same day, we had a. That same day, we had a building committee meeting, and the building committee did a straw poll, they recommended that we try to move forward with the wood frame. So the report I gave to you that evening was, we were under the assumption we were going to move forward with the metal pre-bad building, the building committee made valid arguments, valid points, without this pursuit of the wood frame, so that's why we moved forward with DD with that, you know, that kind of, that assumption, which is why when the estimate came back, which I'll show you, which is the middle column, that's the estimate that came back last week, that is assuming a light wood frame. So that first row, you can see just the difference between the construction system, whether it's light wood frame or metal, and then you can see some of the other updates. A big change, and I want to thank Berkshire Design, they were the ones dealing with the site work design. As you saw back in November, we were looking at site work being just shy of a million dollars, that has now come down to 599,000 as a big, big savings. So I want to thank them for their diligence, trying to find ways to, to reduce costs. Some other changes from November to, to last week, you'll see the design contingency. Back in November, we were looking at 406,000, that's down to 238. And again, the, the idea behind that is, as we get closer to construction, as we also have a design that was more detailed, the estimator was able, able to give us a more accurate figure, which means hopefully, there should be less contingency, you should have a clearer picture of what this final cost is going to be, which is why that figure goes down. Unfortunately, the flip side is typically the construction cost goes up because back during the early phases, there wasn't an overly designed, defined detail building, it was more of a basic square footage estimate. So that 4 million for the light wood frame is a higher number now than it was back in the late fall, but the escalation cost came down, so it's sort of this seesaw, okay? Put that out there. You do see escalation has gone up from November to now, that went from 97,000 to probably 12,000, which concerns me a little bit, why is escalation going up a little bit after we get closer to construction? And then you have the markups, and we've talked about general conditions, and general requirements, and everything else. Back in November, the estimator was sort of marking the whole of that up to about, about 20%. Last week, when all of that, all those figures came in, it was about 15 and a half percent markup, so that's coming down slightly. You then add in your soft costs, and the estimate that we received last week when it included soft costs, was about 7.2 million. Which again, that concerned me when I saw this last Thursday, Friday, and I know the revenue is about 6 million, and we're still looking at a 7.2 million dollar price there. So I felt I would not do my job if I didn't raise to SMA, what's the idea about going back to a metal pre-bad building? So I raised that last week, and at the final column, I took some liberties, I'll be fully transparent. Now, I came up with that last column, I went back to the November metal pre-bad building cost, okay, and I just brought that 3 million over, okay? Is that still accurate now? I can't speak on that, okay? SMA was going to go and try to get an updated figure. But then everything else, all the other estimate numbers that came back last week, I carried over, so the site work, I carried over, and so on and so forth, okay? At the bottom, you can see potentially all in total for a metal pre-bad building with more current estimate numbers is 5.9. So that's where we're at. Are we moving in the right direction? Yes, but we can't keep waiting and waiting and waiting and waiting. So I do appeal to the board, at some point, we have to make a decision, and it's not an easy decision to make, but we need to move forward at some point, whether it's tonight or at the February meeting. I just wanted, and before I open it to the board, I think the last slide I just want to share on this topic is the schedule, you should also have it in front of you, I believe. So SMA has updated the schedule to reflect the assumption that there's a three-week pause, that there would not be a vote this evening, if that vote occurs at the February 13th meeting, what happens? So basically, that means we're on row 26, and they actually put in the pause, and then at the 13th of February meeting, there would be approval of DD, whether it's the light wood structure or the metal pre-bad structure, and then it sort of, the ball continues to roll. We start getting into, the permitting is already begun, we're able to really get next even permitting, and then start getting into the prequal process of general contractor bidding that will be happening about now. We've got to bid in April, and we want to break ground in May, and again, finish the building by next summer. So again, a three-week pause doesn't necessarily derail the project, I want to be transparent about that. But what will derail the project is if we keep waiting and keep waiting. With that said, before I move on with the rest of my report, I just want to open up three columns and questions.
We've come a long way. We started out with a gorgeous timber frame building, state-of-the-art type of thing, using, you know, wood, renewable, where that, that budget estimate in the early design phase was 12 million dollars, and that was the reality check. We had this vision of this gorgeous timber frame building, and that's just unfortunately not in the cards. So as Dr. Lincoln, her identified, here we are today. I, I would, this is me, I would vote for option two, and hire a local TC to provide estimate on building material options, and well, a new, a new estimate with the guys in the trenches that potentially will build the building. I think we'll get our best estimate, and then unfortunately, we've got, what, three weeks to pull this off, so that is going to be a little bit of a task, so we'd have to move quickly on that.
Our guess is that that new estimate will cost us approximately $80,000 worth of materials in that.
Yeah. Oh, I, I think it's definitely worth it, that's my opinion. And I am impressed for time, but I'll stay as long as possible, I have an honor of commitment. So that's my vote, my opinion, I don't know if I, if we're going to vote now, I guess we should, right, on this task?
We're still in discussion.
Mr. Parrott, do you have anything to add to this discussion?
I think that getting a local assessment makes sense, because it'll truth those prices, and they may mean that you can tighten your focus on, on eventualities. So there's a fairly high sort of carrying cost of, well, the price could go up, you've got a lot of cushion built in, but to truth the pricing will reduce that, I think that's virtuous, it can narrow in appropriately, you're going to get there eventually. I think it's $8,000 that's worth it personally. Agreed?
So, I don't mean to go back to this, but you didn't build in the electrical, so what I heard is when you had 300,000 dollars to any, monthly?
Four, yeah, several hundred plus 150.
So that needs to be factored.
Plus, plus, another discussion we've had is radiant floor heating. So everybody in the committee sees the value of radiant floor heating, especially on a shop sock, in the shop areas. The estimate that we have does include, because it's difficult to tear up concrete after the fact, so the estimate does include the plumbing that would be laid into the building. So that would at least be there. It does not include the actual system that would then pump through the piping to create the radiant floor heat. That system, the estimate came back at 235,000, so if we wanted to have radiant heat from the get-go, it's another 235,000 on top of the estimate.
I, I don't know if I'm, it's appropriate time to speak, I don't, sorry, sorry. Okay, forgive me. So one of the suggestions that was talked about was a pellet heating system. So the additional heat that you're describing is on top of the air square heat that's already afforded, so it's sort of a duplicated heating system. So air conditioning, we have to decide, is it a necessary conditioning for the classrooms, the offices, and the bathrooms? Probably not going to be afforded for the shop space, it's just giant doors. You have a seasonal load, and it's mostly a heat load. So one of the things that the Forest Service has already offered is that they would be willing to pick up half the price of a wood heating system. A wood heating system would eliminate the need for electrical adjustments, a generator, and the existing heat as described. So Sanderson Academy, Charlemagne, both did 30,000 square foot buildings for 300 grand. This is a 10,000 square foot building, so maybe we could imagine 150. So all in, we're probably 75 to 100. That's a lot less than having to upgrade the electrical, have a generator, and activate his heating system so that you can have radiant floors. It's a choice, but it is definitely the most affordable, 100% renewable choice. But again, it's a choice.
Questions?
Any else?
So moving on, family and community engagement, I will click on it just like you added, expect your time, but the Gino Renewal Letter?
Hold on, before you move on, Andy, can we vote on this now?
Go ahead, Andrew.
Can I vote in abstention? Can I bow my vote now? Not, not appropriate.
Is there a way to change the order of the agenda, please?
I'd appreciate it, and I think it's, who didn't? Thank you for offering that suggestion.
So if you look at item six on the agenda, vote to approve design documentation for the horticulture building project, we have to move forward.
By motion? By motion to bring it forward?
Yeah, it's on the agenda, but we need to get program photo on.
Okay, I make a motion to bring forward the vote on option one, two, for the horticulture building.
One second. So your motion is for which one? Is for the second out of these three, isn't it?
To move the vote forward.
Or now, or change the order of the agenda?
We have a gotten the vote yet?
So now, we have to have some of the department.
So the motion's on forward. Do you mind if I have the discussion in the chair? Depends on this. Who knows the rules for this body?
I know. I listen, we had to do a second nomination for the nomination, so it's different from what's a little bit different. So what has been the past practice, when you change the order?
If anybody else, we, we have everything.
Have you done it?
But, I mean, I know most of our partners struggle to leave, and I know that's my pushing forward, but I mean, it's also your turn to bring it forward, as regards to important actions. I know that it's an option, the way I, but, so.
My recommendation would motion, a motion to table the design documentation on the horticulture building project to the February 13th meeting. I'm going to have the date in there, just to hold this calendar. I can't make that motion.
But I'm ready, Mr. Parrott. But don't you also need the vote, so there's going to be two different votes, the vote to delay, and then the second would be a vote to hire a local general. Okay, so keeping that, just these two votes, that one's.
So I motion to move this forward?
Well, we have a suggestion to table it forward.
There you go, that's it.
Well, why can't you? It's my, okay, what Julie said. I moved to table.
The design document decision.
The design document decision to February 13th, and then we also.
That's all, just say it, just stop there. I said.
Okay, thank you.
For discussion, all in favor?
Aye. I move to also.
Vote, I, I move that to hire a local TC to provide an estimate.
Yes, yes, I got it, thank you. I move to vote to hire a local TC to write estimate on building material options.
I'll say.
All in favor?
What, so what was the cost of the sale?
We are.
Thinking between eight and 10.
I think it'll come in last, but that's accurate, I would say.
And that would come out of the.
We have a discussion, we have a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Something, something to grab it there?
Thank you.
The family and community engagement, I will click on, the Gino Renewal, just so the board can see, again, same format, this went out, actually, on January 1st, holiday, but that Friday that we got back, this went out to the community, and I just wanted to highlight again, my focus this month was around co-op, sort of the purpose behind co-op, the regulations around co-op, the, the relationship not only between the students and the shops and the school, but also the employers, and how I see this relationship and those important actions. And as in past months, Mr. Bianca had his article, you know, in various updates, Ski Club, I see chef in the audience, he's highlighting our recent trip to Ski Club, FFA, what they've been doing, some fundraising, and again, current advances and end dates, so that went out beginning of last month. In addition to that, I just want to take a few moments and highlight, there's been several meetings and discussions that have been happening at the school level and state level. I think the board is fully aware that it's a hot topic across the state around admissions with vocational schools, and specifically lottery, talking about this. I had a meeting, I think I talked about it at the board, with the board, Senator Comerford last month. On January 5th, I had a similar meeting with Senator Bealus's office, so he is based out of Westfield, but he oversees many communities that also feed into some vocational. Had a great conversation, again, talking about the pros and cons around the admissions concerns and around lottery, just making sure that his office is fully aware, and hopefully will have a big picture when it comes to potential discussions in the State House, and that occurred. We've had a couple of school-based health center update meetings, I just had one earlier today, actually. Again, we are in the process, we being the Hilton Health Network, they're in the process of finalizing a hire for behavioral health, they're in an earlier stage, trying to hire a new health worker. After today's meeting, the goal is, it sounds like, there's going to be a subcommittee meeting later this week to identify students that we, we think we should be able to consult with the behavioral health therapist. That will then spearhead a whole bunch of paperwork, and referrals, and insurance, and so on and so forth. Our hope is to have the first counseling sessions, at the earliest, the Wednesday we come back from February break. Right now, it sounds like the therapists will be working with our students on Wednesdays, so we're sort of targeting that Wednesday after February break as the first day, if not, it would be early March, so that ball is definitely going in the right direction. We've had a few meetings with.
Excuse me, sir. I need to excuse myself. Thank you, everybody. I'll move that forward. Thank you, John, for having your thoughts.
Had a few meetings with Cooley Dickinson, which have now moved on to meeting with Mass General Brigham at Boston. So, if you're aware or not, the school has an athletic trainer, North England High actually has an athletic trainer. Both are funded by Cooley Dickinson. And I learned the history behind that, I won't get into the history here today, but there's discussions between the hospital and the city many years ago, many mayors ago. And so, where this agreement was, that the hospital will fund this athletic trainer model for North England High. That was the original agreement. Smith Vocational came along, we're expanding our athletic programs, and the hospital operates the same service. So, we've had an athletic trainer over the last several years for the hospital. As we know, Cooley Dickinson is part of Mass General, and they are trying to create a much larger athletic trainer service model because there's obviously many hospitals across the region. And the model has the potential, a lot of benefits for us in that our particular athletic trainer would be part of Mass General now, would have access to more professional development, would have access to more networking with other athletic trainers across the region, and God forbid, you know, we're down to trainer, we're meeting a second trainer, we might have a list of available athletic trainers in the future that we can tap into to break if our particular athletic trainer is unavailable for any reason. So, there are a lot of positives. At the end of the day, what we're looking at is creating a model where we're hiring an athletic trainer through Mass General. Like Cooley Dickinson continues probably a grant program where the funding for that particular athletic trainer still comes from Cooley Dickinson. So, there'll still be no cost for Smith Vocational, and I would assume that North England High can do trainer as well. Some good conversations, I think a lot of great positive potential for our particular athletic trainer. Moving on, I just felt the board needs to be aware of this. So, after that first meeting that Dr. Spencer Robinson and I had with Senator Coverford talking about lottery and admissions, that sort of led to big picture discussions. So, Senator Coverford is coming to visit this Friday to talk about just our vision as a school, looking at debuilding, you know, how do we deal with construction, and so on and so forth. So, I'm looking forward to that meeting on Friday. Through all of that, Senator Coverford's office was talking to MSBA. The MSBA executive director planned on visiting Western Mass and wants to visit some Western Mass schools. Senator Coverford thought, based on who we are and our needs and sort of our history and our complexities around the governance and around trying to build a new building, it might be wise to have MSBA come and visit, talk to us. I love the idea, we agreed that we'd have a visit on February 6th. So, I was prepared this evening to tell you, we're going to have MSBA on campus February 6th. But then something happened. MSBA backed out. And I just put quotation marks, a part of the response I got from Senator Coverford's office, and I just want the board to be aware, this is part of the rationale. Since in part there are complicated history here, he and Smith vote not having submitted a statement of interest. I can comment on the not submitting a statement of interest. We're not in a position yet to submit a statement of interest to talk about a new debuilding until we figure out how we're going to deal with everything. So, I'll stay in by that. If they don't want to visit because we don't have a statement of interest, I value that. They're a busy entity, and politically it may not look good if they come and visit us if we don't have a current statement of interest in the pipeline. I get that. But in part there are complicated history here, really struck me, why would a non-political state agency decide to not come here because of spilt milk? Spilt milk is my words. I just, I was offended by that, honestly. And I share that with Mava. Mava colleagues have a similar history in that when schools get into the pipeline with MSBA, some of the initial feedback are from their state senators and representatives. They have a chance to step up and talk about, as a senator or as a representative, they advocate for the schools, and it becomes very political, which is unfortunate for a, should be a non-political agency. So, I worry that if we have a poor past with MSBA, how is that going to impact us moving forward if we're going to get to the point where we can talk about a new debuilding? So, I share that, I'm going to share all of this with Senator Coverford on Friday, but I wanted the board to be aware first.
Dr. Lincoln McGraw, I want to offer a slightly different perspective that may not be as informed as yours, so bringing my background and experience with this to the consideration. I was the one who initiated the invitation to Dr. to Dr. Consider to come forward to see debuilding and to help her understand how complicated the challenge is to replace that structure, right? So, my, my, the, this, I think Senator Coverford is a woman of action, I know she is based on her, you know, on her legislative history, but, and her office too, just crackling that way. So, how I interpreted that, so, I was seeing the visit, this Friday would be like, hey, this is the complicated history, the Donahue report, I'm sure she's familiar with it, just make, you know, revisit that and sort of all the nuances there, and then see what the next steps would be. So, I was thinking, Friday is going to be very, very, very basic introductory kind of like, okay, let's just understand what's happening here. I think that her office and certainly under her direction really leant to say, hey, you know, the MSBA executive director, Cooley's coming, let's get them to submit a vote, and we're pretty happy to see on her part, for sure, maybe not fully understanding how complex it is, and that's what the point of Friday is. So, does that, and so I understand this spilt milk and the politics and public truth potentially of other vocational schools, not okay, maybe not at all, but that's how I was looking at it, like, oh, just kind of cross wires a little bit, like instead of going one, two, three, you went to one, two, three, oh, let's get that to.
I hold respect to Senator Coverford and Cooley's. I just thought MSBA should have declined the offer so that we can have a statement of interest in the pipeline. Say that, unacceptable, but the fact that you want to bring up history, one of the reasons why you want to visit.
Do you have a sense of, I, so I read of complicated history is the governance model. Do you have a different read on it?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, and therefore aware. Some good news on the board front with the hoisting license. So, Venture Associates, most of you know, are lobbying for, and we work with Mava, Representative Gonzalez, he's out of Springfield, he's the House Chair of the Committee on Public Safety and Homeland Security, and they had a very positive meeting that included that committee's new council. It sounds to everybody that was involved in that meeting that a bill will be coming out of committee in support of what we've been pushing for with Mava. Basically, what that bill will be is that part of the exception to hoisting will allow students to access equipment that you need a hoisting license for. It would allow that education to recur if the student is operating the equipment under the direction provision of, one, a chapter 74 instructor who also happens to have a valid hoisting license. So, that's going to be the recommendation most likely to be in that committee. In that particular meeting, Representative Gonzalez actually did reference Smith Vocational and our students and teachers that went down and advocated at the State House, so they remember this, just for the, so. I share that's positive news, give a finish prize that before you know it, our students will be able to use all of the equipment. Professional culture, I just listed once, but thinking, I can't thank Mr. Bianca, I am honored with his leadership around ADAC and the steering committee and all of the work of faculty, getting ready for the April of March. So, we're just about at the 12th hour, getting all of the reports finalized and voted upon by the staff. I'm sure Mr. Bianca can talk about it in the meeting, the chair, so we're getting it, we're getting very close to March, and we'll be ready. I attended the CBSR luncheon back in early part of January, Attorney Wong came and presented on, again, just some legal updates across the state, which was always nice. I want to thank again Mr. Bianca for inviting various staff to the faculty meeting to do a presentation. So, this past month, we had Megan Lina, she's one of our biology teachers, she did a presentation on implementing storylines in biology. It's a new curriculum that she found, and it's, it was amazing to hear what she's doing in her classroom and the engagement, the level of engagement and the increase of the level of engagement she gives her students, which is great for a major, so that was nice. And then this past week, I went down to Devon's, my last official role as a Mava officer, and presented to this year Leadership One candidates, which is great, it's sort of rewarding. What happens on this particular day is the first session for new Leadership One candidates, all the officers, we get brought out to different tables, and there's talking points, and we talked to the Leadership One candidates, who are typically current teachers within a vocational school, not only vocational instructors, but also academic teachers. And we just talked about leadership, the different components of leadership. My particular topic that I was facilitating with my table was around, you know, the relationship between staff and administration. What does that look like, and how do you make a positive relationship between staff and administration? So, a great day to have a, that's what I'm saying. No donations to report this month. In the news, as I mentioned, we've had a lot of good PR. The article on the left was an editorial in response to the admissions and lottery article that I was quoted in a few weeks ago. Again, talking about my vantage point with the lottery, the lottery essentially rearranging the seats, okay, and telling different people, yes, you're in, telling other people, no, you're not in. The answer to the issue is, I don't want to say no to anybody. A family is choosing to send his or her daughter to a vocational school for a reason. Who am I to say no? I want to say yes to any student and any family who wants access to a vocational school. We simply don't have enough seats. So, again, the easy answer, and the great answer, is to expand capacity, offer more seats. I know that that is attached to money. So, anyways, that was sort of the crux of the article, I think it was that, and there was an editorial basically supporting the article. As you probably, I'm not sure if you were able to witness, the attractive parade, the day where we were participating in that, and then the article on the right, again, was summarizing the visit that we had. Looking ahead, I just want to touch on a couple of things. Today was the kickoff to the FY24 budget meetings. My day was basically spent with Mr. Bianca in his office, listening to the department heads beginning to advocate for the budgets for next year, so it's a restart, and we'll be ready to present to the board, hopefully in March, and have something approved by the board. I do want to jump down, I already talked about Senator Coverford coming on Friday to highlight the mayor, the joint meeting next week, just as a reminder for the board. I do want to highlight tomorrow morning, we were supposed to have the general advisory committee tomorrow morning, seven o'clock in the library. I made the decision this morning, not knowing how the weather's going to be in the morning, we have postponed that meeting to next Wednesday, that's January 31st, same time, seven o'clock in the restaurant, so just trying to plan ahead. Beyond that, that's about it. I do plan on my February meeting will be sort of that state of the school presentation, just talking about big picture, how we deal with the school enrollment, where are we? And I think it's a good segue to then get the budget in March. With that, I'll turn it back to the chair.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Bailey. Our student reps could be with us tonight. Enrollment currently sits at 573 total students. You can see the application year over year over the last five years. We are up, we're at 230 applications at this time, 24 up over January 2024. Right now, we have 50 from Northampton, so 21.7% of applications on file. As Dr. Lincoln Holker said, we did begin our budget meetings this week, and we'll, Ms. Fermin and I will work together to come up with a building level budget to present to him, hopefully right after February break, maybe before, but definitely after February break, you can have that and sit and meet with him to discuss our recommendations. School council, we're in process of updating the student handbook. Mr. Sabonis, one of our assistant principals, is leading that effort. Just to let you know, the youth advisory meetings, we planned an idea around positive choices month, we're using SPIFI data. I apologize because that didn't update, but our next meeting is tomorrow. We've formed three subcommittees with the students, so we have a subcommittees that are all focused on the messaging that will happen in March. We have one that is the visuals subcommittee, working on posters and other visuals, like some things from the front side. They want to work in collaboration for our social media to put out positive graphics and around choosing positive behaviors and identifying some of the data that we have as with you. We have another one that are going to be doing announcements, that subcommittee is working on those, and we're going to end up having a, sort of a public service announcement, PSA video contest. So, the youth advisory is going to, the other committee is that video committee, and they're actually going to produce three short 30-second, 40-second clips that we can share out with the community on different topics, ask you different questions. And one of them's going to be the senior sit-downs, and they're going to have seniors talk about advice they would give themselves if they could go back to their freshman self and things like that. So, we're excited about it, I hope it comes out well, and then we're going to give, we'll have a competition out to the various 15 shops around producing their own video and then picking the winner for pizza party. On personnel, you'll see that we have posted for vocational, assisting vocational instructor in health for long-term subpositions, so we posted that job after, in October. We did have some candidates, those candidates did not continue on in the process. We have not had any candidates for the health technology instructors position. So, the vocational assistant that's in there is currently in the long-term sub role as the instructor, and now we don't really see that happening on the near horizon, so we're going to post a fill her position, so they have three people in there. So, that'll be there. We did repost the health assisting instructor, and we posted for an English long-term sub to fill that gap of Mr. Cooley leaving. We did hire, we hired retired teacher Kathy Brown, who is English certified, she's going to come back and provide us and the students' grade instructions for the end of the school year. So, we're lucky to find somebody with a teaching license and has the ability to fill that role. We'll repost for that role in the middle end of March when we do all of our normal postings, trying to hit all those up and coming graduates, we're looking for employment, so. Any other questions? That's my presentation for this evening.
Mr. Bianca, I miss having students at our meetings, and I have a question for you and the mayor. The question for you is, what do you think are the challenges to get students to come to these meetings for the mayor? What's your experience with the public health committee? Are, do you have student representatives there for meetings and regularly? How, you know, we are just close, our students come from far and wide, and that is a potential issue, but is one point to agree about how we could get a, potentially get a reliable, regular student presence at that end of meetings?
Well, one of them's an athlete, so basketball students right now, he's here in the fall, but definitely athletics are in the lead for him. The other one is around transportation, so I'll continue to work with him.
Coming, getting there and then getting back on the ground. And what's your experience?
As a member, if I attend every meeting and then they're considered by your council, I have to have a dash sessions, but right before.
And maybe with.
Student advisor, they actually have separate meeting prior to the actual course of the meeting, maybe half thirty minutes or so prior to.
Do they have just students or are they?
Yeah. So, they present, and the student representative, they practice everything they can, they have a room for them.
It's the.
So, she's stupid.
Often, a.
So, why may I make a suggestion, because we're doing this to us who do live outside the area, is that maybe that they may want to zoom in and give, you know, a commentary for at the beginning of the meeting, a thought there, so that there's representation using the technology.
This meeting does not have a.
True, but for that person's presence.
True, but for that person's presence, is that it's a hybrid, it's just him zooming in?
I think that if they were, if the students were moved at the beginning, and it was more difficult time of when they were going to report, you know?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
So potentially if we started, like they do start the meeting with a student report, so they know it's at five?
Yeah. I think that would, I think that's a regulation I'd agree to students that we do have.
And see if that would be a difference to them?
I think it could make a difference.
Do you, do you have video productions?
Since they can actually read it or digitally. But you're talking about PSA. Aren't those going to be digital?
Yes. They're going to be pre-recorded.
Are you talking about live or are you talking?
But.
Well, no, I think she's.
I don't know. Yeah, that's, I gather that, that you were talking about them pre-recording themselves, and then we just play it. It could be an option.
Sometimes.
Yeah. They wouldn't be present, but.
Right. Which would be our first choice, for sure.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Sure. The board's willing to do that.
More corporate.
I'll talk to them. Thank you.
So this is for Tim Smith. Not much to report on facilities. He continues to wait on the windows and the heat pump for the companion animal building. Plumbing has completed their roofing and it has been inspected. Working with a roofing company to address some of the recent leaks. And the sewer line project for the farm area companion animal building has contracted field equipment, and the project is to start soon some other months. You're hoping to get it started soon, unfortunately. Good luck.
Your report.
Sure. So my report, as of January 1st, 2024, the IRS changed a travel reimbursement rate to 67 cents. Previously, the board had voted that we just accept that rate. The, it's a great, city-appropriate funds to cover the increase of the stipends for the dividends to the board of commissioners. So that was actually put into our, so that was very recently picked up. The last meeting I reported about the unemployment, the seasonal designation for the sports. The city HR director, Chad Dunn, has filed an appeal with the Department of Unemployment. As of the other day, we still have, from the, as both Dr. and Dr. department meetings. And one grant that I did not discuss, it's not a recourse, but we received $10,000 for DESI to help with battle, to battle the chronic absenteeism.
Yeah, so I, as you probably recall, last week, we had a presentation from Culinary and Italy Science, talking about the potential international trip to Italy. And they did a wonderful presentation. We agree as board that we would have an official vote at this month's meeting, so they could then proceed to, if it was approved, then proceed on, I have it in for families and students. Unfortunately, last week was hectic between a holiday and a snow day, and we had a Mava. Just things happened, and I'll take ownership that we didn't get that agenda, not the agenda. So I'd ask the chair, based on the clause at the end of the agenda, things we could bring forth is not technically a new out-of-right-field agenda item. We did agree on it last month. I just forgot, you know, the official agenda. So I do ask the chair, if it has an agenda item, to vote on the international trip to Italy. And that is, and it will be planned February of '25, I believe. I would hope to have that, to have a motion.
I'll put forward the motion to approve this particular, for that being, one, second.
I think.
Discussion. All in favor?
I agree.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So a vote to approve the NEAS principles.
Yes, is it that I did?
That'll be completed for the February 13th, 24th.
Vote to approve surplus of 12-inch Rockwell disc sander and that constellating spindle from Teflon.
Second.
All in favor?
I agree.
Vote to approve the following reimbursable grants. FY 2024 proficiency-based outcomes of language is a very big question. Collaborating with other vocational schools, Essex, Capite, Key, Shonchin, Choba, and SBA, just, Shorva has taken the lead on this grant, will receive the funds from DESI of $48,500.
Just, just for context, so in the past, DESI has put out grants around language acquisition. This year, they focused on vocational schools. A lot of vocational schools are single-person departments. So a lot of the focus was to be able to create almost a multi-district language department. In this case, we voted, we approved our Spanish teacher, Aaron Mendelson, to go ahead and sign on to that grant. We never knew what money there would be potentially, or what the outcome would be, but they did receive the grant. So there is money for professional development. There's money for, to backfill for subs. There's money for curriculum and instruction materials and writing. So particularly, the amount is $900 per teacher, which we would get, we would put to them for reimbursement to pay for that. They would also pay for mileage, substitutes, and there's potential curriculum writing up to $2,000 per teacher. So this is going to increase the collaboration between the schools, but it's also going to give our Spanish teacher, Mr. Mendelson, access to a lot of people and resources and backfill the money. So I don't know if you want to talk about the money side of it, or?
Sure. So we're, Mr. Mendelson has been working on the teacher. From Shorva, it is actually taking the lead. So we're waiting for just a breakdown on what will, what will be, will receive and what will not receive.
And it sounds like a great opportunity to serve a important part of our student population and successfully addressing that kind of burden of the larger here.
Sorry.
Just a single person in the entire school. Do you have any sense yet of what those proficiency-based outcomes might look like?
I, not yet.
Fantastic term. Love that.
Yeah. Well, one of it is, is the, it is the push for the seal of bylaw diversity, which we push for here. So they're looking at building things to be able to work towards that for those students that are officially applying. Yep. So I know that's one. So what we're looking for is approval for us to be able to spend and then get reimbursement.
So I have a motion, second. All in favor?
I agree.
Next item, next page, Northeast Education Foundation Partnering Teachers Program, $3,000 for free D map.
Please draw me where it's on the place.
So, second.
This is for Colonel Justice. I think we see as partners in the action, which is a skillset for forcing that.
Can I just add one thing that Sam Popper, who is on the board of Northeast Education Foundation, is coming to visit, she's going to be speaking for her partner Friday for having lunch. She has some questions about, so she is, about the need for grants, small grants from any effort of your concern, so I would like to run your conversation invitation. So I'm excited about that. Happy to see these two grants and what we will do.
So we have a motion, a second. All in favor?
I agree.
Northeast Education Foundation, small grants, teachers program, $1,500 for Duncan Anderson, the thing he carries.
So, second.
All in favor?
I agree.
Career technical condition, CTI, $240,000 for Culinary, adult head.
So, second.
All in favor?
I agree.
Recommended March meeting, change to March 26th for tuition. Future business Tuesday, February 13th, Board of Trustees meeting, 5:00 here. Tuesday, March 6th, Board of Trustees meeting, 5:00 here. Tuesday, 8:00, Board of Trustees meeting, 5:00 here. Upcoming events, March 4th through 7th, DESI TM review.
That will be here on Sunday.
Can I just throw out the meeting dates of the March and April meetings are just, are pretty close together?
I would ask that you tell me.
So we've been wanting to consider, will we meet until after the vacation?
So.
We don't like it.
So I just wanted to confirm before I said something, the February 13th meeting, the recommendation of the 13th is actually a week earlier than normal, to the days of the 3rd, because it's February break. So that's why we recommended the 13th. The March date and the April date, the challenge there, according to the bylaw, March 26th, we're recommending we move back, hopefully, as you saw, we'll comment, trying to wait for the tuition rate for the state. If we meet, as we normally meet in March, I don't think I've been here if we got a tuition rate for that to be in March sometime. We delay a week, we may have the numbers, they have a more realistic budget. The challenge, if we push the April date back, and you recognize that, but the bylaws of the city, we need to have an improved budget, improved by the board and through the mayor. I think if we wait another week, maybe beyond the deadline.
So, still reading these dates, March 20th, 2024, Spring Program Advisory Committee Dinner Meetings. And then, you know, that's for the FFA, so that's, State Convention Chairman, Fred Green, Hotel Conference, and then you throw up, upstate vocational student awards, back to the fact that, but I believe that means between 2024 and 2025. So, then, anything else?